Would you call the roll, please?
Councilman DeCecio? Councilwoman Guevara?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Mendoza? Councilman Nowakowski? Councilwoman Pastor?
Here.
Councilwoman Stark? Vice Mayor Waring? Mayor Williams?
Here. Would you like to introduce yourself as our interpreter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My name is Mario Barajas and I'm going to be serving as today's interpreter and I'm going to be making a brief announcement in Spanish. Buenas tardes a todos, mi nombre es Mario Barajas, voy a estar sirviendo como el intérprete de español el día de hoy. Si alguien desea escuchar la interpretación del programa de esta tarde, podrán pasar hacia la parte de atrás con el señor Sergio para poder recoger el equipo para escuchar la traducción hacia el español. Gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. It's time for citizens' comments. If you wish to speak, you need to fill out a yellow card. And each has two minutes. Zach Conore, you're first.
Love the Psalm we read at the beginning. Hello again, honorable representatives of Arizona. I come back today to remind you of your duty to uphold justice for the unborn citizens of our state. I appear before you not as a neutral party to this issue, but as a Christian standing on the principles of Scripture, which I admit may seem foreign to you. We've all been told that to engage in such behavior is to violate a supposed separation of church and state, a phrase that has been twisted and weaponized by the enemies of my Lord to get Christians like me to check their ultimate commitments at the door and enter the public square stripped of their foundation, to condemn a moral atrocity like abortion. But I will not relinquish my religious foundation in fighting for the lives of these children any more than pro-choice advocates will relinquish their religious commitment to the position that human beings in the womb aren't worthy of our protection because they haven't earned their personhood yet. I am more concerned with being faithful to my Lord than looking respectable or reasonable in your sight. What's unreasonable is for mothers in our state to think so little of their children as to treat them like disposable waste for their own sakes. It is not respectable to pay someone to assassinate your own offspring by having their little bodies sucked out of your body and then discarded under the label of unwanted parasite. It is unconscionable to carve up a child and call this act choice, healthcare, or reproductive freedom, which is a euphemism for child murdering rights, due to the fact that if a woman is pregnant, she has already exercised her right to reproduce. This term becomes the thin veneer of pseudo-justice that exclaims it's a righteous thing for them to desire the death of their own children for their sake and the obligation of others like us to ensure that they have the provision to carry it out. Such thinking is the basis of violent injustice, with the primary victim being the unborn child in the womb who is made in the image of God. Respectfully and lovingly to you, leaders of our city, you are required to act and ensure true justice for the true victims of this crime, that is, the fatherless children being abandoned by their parents in our state. Even if you're sitting here today and you agree with what I'm saying, merely acknowledging that the truth, that this is murder, is not enough. You must act to end it completely, not play a political football with the lives of the preborn neighbors you are commanded to love and defend. This council is to be governed by Arizona revised statutes in setting city policy and passing rules and regulations. Therefore, I am pleading with you to pass no new law, but to recognize and enforce existing Arizona state law, revised statute 13-3603. If you do not, the only ones that suffer as a result will be babies in our state that are systematically and brutally murdered under your watch. Thank you so much again for your time. Go to endborshnow.com for more details.
Leonard Clark?
Thank you, Mayor Thelda Williams and Phoenix City Council. My name is Leonard Clark, born right down the street at Good Samaritan Hospital. They changed the name. So, I'm not pretending. This is the real Leonard Clark. But anyways, I want to thank somebody that I don't normally thank in public, that's Arizona Public Service, because as all of us know, they have offered, I think, 1.5 million or something approximately in funds for those struggling federal workers who might be coming up short, especially tomorrow, for their electricity bills. So, I will give credit where credit is due as a citizen of Phoenix. I would also ask that possibly, I know a lot of you, all of you do good work in your community, that you could maybe publicize anything that is affiliated with the city of Phoenix or other organizations you know that could help our 800,000, approximately 800,000 federal workers who will have no checks coming in tomorrow. Many are worried about their mortgages, and I know we have a lot of federal workers in the city of Phoenix. Whether you're for Trump or not Trump, that's not the point. Right now, they are hostages, and I'm hoping you could find some ingenuative ways to help our citizens here in Phoenix. Phoenix is a city of love and compassion. We're not going to let the hate win out. We're going to make this city the city that it always has been and it will be, a city about love and treating our fellow citizens and human beings compassionately and kindly. Thank you.
Thank you. Greta Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council, and all in attendance here today. I'm Greta Rogers. I bring to your attention for planning before we get to the next budget hearings, enduring them and on the passage of the budget. For PPD and PFD, we have essentials that must be addressed. Recruitment is essential, and you do everything in your power to enable and to enhance the goal of getting both of these public safety departments, which are number one and two essential in this city, to full complement. Two, in PFD, you have to replace fire trucks. We have fire trucks that are over 16 years old, which is the outer limit determined for age and usefulness, without excessive repairs for a truck. You have ordered the fire department to drive those vehicles at no more than 30 miles an hour. We're talking emergency vehicles, not pleasure vehicles. Emergency. That is unseemly and unacceptable. So, get on your horse and get these things planned for, budgeted, and done. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Pierce?
Good afternoon. It's nice to see that the Phoenix City government isn't shut down. I'm here to present a citizen's petition under the provisions of Chapter 4, Section 22 of the city charter. I'm going to read it into the record and then file it. Whereas the city of Phoenix administration has recommended to the mayor and city council a proposed bond issue for the renovations of the city-owned arena known as the Talking Stick Arena, hereinafter referred to as the arena, provided for in ordinances S. 45266 and S. 45265 respectively, which are incorporated herein by reference thereto. And whereas the city council at its formal meeting of 12th December 2018 set aside consideration of the above cited proposed ordinances for consideration after a series of public hearings on the merits on the issue. And whereas, at the present time, the city of Phoenix is without a duly elected mayor with a mandate to proceed, and also without a full membership of councilors to fully represent all the citizens of Phoenix, and with a current mayor acting in a caretaker capacity with no mandate to proceed from the electors of the city of Phoenix, proceeding to bring the proposed ordinances above cited for consideration and a vote is contrary to accepted norms of democratic process, and with vacancies at the present time of city councilors, segments of the city populace who will be without representation. Wherefore, I, Michael Pierce, a legal resident and duly qualified elector in the city of Phoenix, hereby petition the mayor and city council of Phoenix to consider and enact within 15 days a resolution, ordinance, or measure to set aside consideration and vote of the above cited ordinances for a bond issue to renovate the city-owned arena herein referenced, and to further make provision on the ballot for the special mayoral election to be held on March 12, 2019, a referendum question for the electors of the city of Phoenix to decide. The text to the question being, shall the electors of the city of Phoenix approve a bond issue incorporated in proposed city ordinances S. 45266 and S. 45265 respectively in the amount of $150 million for renovation of the city-owned arena known as the Talking Stick Arena? I duly file this right now.
Thank you. Next is Pascal Labait. I think he's coming, right? Okay.
Mayor, while we're waiting, we should also let the public know that today is National Law Enforcement Day, and for those officers that are here today, thank you for all your service, and for those officers in the city of Phoenix, thank you for everything that you do for us. You protect us. You're there for us. When you are, when we're sleeping at night, nice and cozy in our beds with our families, you're out there protecting us, and a lot of us have not forgotten that. We respect what you've done. And a special shout-out, too, to those officers that work in my district. In Choy Lane, we've had a rash of burglaries over there and, you know, robberies, and the officers were able to nab the suspects today. They worked hard at it. They were able, they identified the problem, they worked hard at it, and they got it done. So, thank you, officers that are here today. Thank you for everything you do. God bless you and your families.
Thank you, Councilman. Go ahead.
Hello, Saint, Mayor and councils. I'm here for the reason now that I live on 1534 East Willet Street, and right across from my house is that Clinic La Familia. Now, those people there, I don't know what's going on with the, between the city of Phoenix police and them. They park, I called the city of Phoenix to put a sign in my side, which I live on 1534, right across from the clinic, and so at, so they, you know, park from 8:00 in the morning until 5:00 at night. And so, those people there, they park whatever they wanted. Today, in other days, the city of Phoenix garbage department, they passed by, and because they park where they shouldn't be parking, the city of Phoenix dropped, so they couldn't pick up the garbage and the, and the other merchandise, I mean, the other things. So, what's going on between the city of Phoenix police and those people, I don't know, but it's, it's, it's not acceptable what they're doing that. I think the city of Phoenix, they should take an action against those people there and make sure to park where they are. They gotta be parking. They parked right beside the water hydro there, and nobody said nothing. I called the city of Phoenix police this morning, and nobody showed up in there. So, I leave it up to the city council here to do something about those people there. Thank you very much. Have a nice afternoon.
Thank you. Philip Reed? Can't go talk to him.
Thank you.
We have city staff coming to talk to you.
My name is Philip Reed, and I reside in the 1700 block of East South Mountain Avenue in Phoenix. I'm not so presumptuous as to make this my first attempt to solve the problems that I will raise, and then I will highlight the problems. For the last four months, we've had a stripped-out abandoned vehicle in the 1600 block of East South Mountain Avenue with no license plates. I have called the abandoned car division. I've called our city council person's office, and I've called the mayor's office, and all I've received in return is lip service. Also, I take the bus, and three of the four bus stops at the intersection of 16th Street and Baseline are consistently in bad order. And I'm not talking about the bus stops, because I recognize that there's a contract for the care. I'm talking about the grounds surrounding the bus stops. I will give credit that the bus stop on the southwest corner of 16th Street and Baseline was addressed on January 4th after pleading and begging for five months. My biggest disappointment is in the lip service received from our city council person's office, because one would hope and believe that that person would have a vested interest in our community. So, I'm going to leave, because the problems still persist. If you're interested, I have pictures in my phone, but I'll leave you with a rhetorical question. When it comes to problems of this nature, recognizing that in the big scheme of things, they're fairly small, yet they're still problems. So, my rhetorical question is, are all sections of the city, when it comes to these kinds of problems, addressed equally? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That ends citizen comments. Could you please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances numbered G. 6525 and 6541 through 6550, S. 45268 through 45276, and 45278 through 45310, and resolutions 21697 and 21702 through 21705.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Oh, we have no minutes today. The next is a motion to approve mayor and city council board's commission nominations.
Motion to approve mayor and city council board and commission nominations.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have people here to be sworn in? Thank you. Do you have the card? Raise your right hand, please. Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic
and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of
You need to name whichever office that you're being appointed to. Everybody do it? Okay. According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
You are now official. Thank you very much for your volunteer to serve. Thank you. Next item, liquor license applications.
Motion to approve items 2 through 27, noting that item 28 has been withdrawn by the applicant.
Second.
I do have a card on item 12. Camille Alakon? Did you want to speak since this? Okay. Motion is to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ready?
We are ready, Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve items 29 to 118, except the following. Items 35, 36, 43, 48, 49, 51, 115, 116, and 117. Item 84 is as corrected. Item 41 has been withdrawn, and item 117 is being continued to February 20, 2019. But there are cards, correct? Yeah.
Roll call. No, wait. Do I have a second? Okay, I have a second.
Just want to make sure that we've taken out 35, 43? I didn't hear that.
Yes.
Those are, okay.
Mm-hmm.
And 42 and 49. Okay, thank you.
DeCecio?
Yes. You didn't take out 40? I thought you did.
It's 35, 36, 43.
43, I'm sorry. That's what it was, 43. Yeah.
Okay.
43.
Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza? Nowakowski? Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? Williams?
Yes. Believe that takes us to item 35.
Move approval of item 35.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
DeCecio?
No.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza? Nowakowski? Mendoza? Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? Williams?
Yes. Item 41 was withdrawn. It brings us to item 43.
36.
36. And we do have a card on that. Leonard Clark?
So...
Yes, you can do a motion.
Move item 36.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. My name is Leonard Clark, lifelong resident of Phoenix, and I strongly support approving that funding, or this funding, and for the Dr. Martin Luther King Committee celebration. It was a wonderful, wonderful event last year. People from all religions, ethnicities, different groups of people came out in love and humanity and remembered a great spirit, a beautiful spirit, Dr. Martin Luther King, and I am so happy, because I know that you will vote to approve the funding, so that this city, in this time of strife in our country, this city, the fifth largest city in the United States of America, can once again show that Phoenix leads the way of why in the United States people can get along despite their differences, and we can remember that civil rights did not just happen overnight. They took a while, and they're still happening now. So, thank you so much. I hope you'll approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Are we on 43 or 36?
36.
36.
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza? Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Williams?
Yes. Now, we are on item 43.
Move item 43.
We have a motion and a second? Any comments? Roll call.
DeCecio?
No.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza? Nowakowski? Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring?
Uh, no.
Williams?
Yes. Okay, we are now on item 48. Okay, this is the reconsideration.
I would move to reconsider item 42.
48?
48, sorry. Reconsideration of item 42 from the December 12 agenda.
Oh, got it.
Sorry about that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I can just do a voice?
Yeah.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Sounds like two nay votes. Is that correct? So, it'd be five to two? Okay. Oh, six to two, sorry. Can't count. So, we are now on item 49. 49 is the reconsideration of the proposed water rate increase. I've asked staff to prepare a short presentation. So, I believe Catherine Sorenson would give us a recap on where we are, why this is so important, not only to the city, but to this valley.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council. I'm here today to ask for your approval of our recommendation for a 6% rate revenue increase in 2019 and a 6% rate revenue increase in 2020. This recommendation is about securing our future and rebuilding our core. The rate revenue recommendation supports investment in the infrastructure necessary to ensure that we maintain reliable water deliveries in North Phoenix in the face of Colorado River shortages, and it also supports continuing investment in the rehabilitation and replacement of aging pipelines, water treatment plants, reservoirs, pump stations, and other infrastructure in the central and southern parts of our city. Our ability to deliver safe, clean, reliable water supplies is directly dependent on this infrastructure. We can accomplish this while still maintaining some of the lowest water rates in the country. This proposal has been very carefully vetted by our citizens' water rate advisory committee, who spent years reviewing our budgets, capital programs, cost of service, financials, affordability, and other aspects of our utility. I would really like to thank them for their hard work and dedication to this city. As your water director, I ask you to continue this important investment in our community's public health, economic opportunity, and quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. We have cards on this? Do I have a motion?
Thank you. When I pulled up to my house on December 21st to a gusher at my neighbor's house, I realized that we certainly do need this, and so I would recommend that we approve the request.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I will take, oh, you need to read the title first? All right, and then I'll take the cards.
Item 49 is for ordinance number G. 6541, an ordinance amending Chapter 37 of the Phoenix City Code by amending Section 3763 pertaining to water rates within the city of Phoenix and Town of Paradise Valley, and Section 37133 pertaining to water environmental rate and providing for an effective date of the first bill date of February 2019.
Thank you. Greta Rogers, you're first.
I want to affirm, as a citizen of this city for many, many years, I firmly support and urge
I, like many citizens in the room, by the way, my name's Leonard Clark, many citizens in the room have seen Phoenix grow tremendously. I remember when they were first building Metro Center, so it's kind of giving you where... Hold on. So, I do support this, but I ask that, once you pass it, that you do the most, I mean, you really focus in on auditing, making sure that the tax increase is not going to be, you know, wasted. I'm just highly concerned that we still haven't really addressed the fact that how much more can Phoenix grow? I want us to grow. I mean, I wish we were in that type of world forever, but there's going to come a time, if this Lake Mead situation continues, then, and you can ask the folks down at the legislature who are going to be addressing the whole drought contingency plan. So, I really hope that you'll vote for this. I understand my conservative friends and their concerns, but as the committee members who did all this hard work on your commission, one of them said essentially that this is the one thing that 100% of Phoenix citizens need, unless there's somebody from another planet that I don't know about, you know? No. So, thank you very much. Hope you'll vote for it.
Thank you. I have one last card. Does not want to speak in favor. Arizona Chapter Associated General Contractors in favor. I will tell you, to me, this is one of the most important issues. I agree with the gentleman and our commission members. Phoenix is at a crossroad. We have always been good stewards of our water. We have been leaders in this valley and in this state. And our system was designed so that the Colorado River always flowed. Unfortunately, by the end of this year, we're saying, "This year," there is a potential that it will not be flowing very well for us. We are on the bottom of the tier of the people of the states that receive this water. We will receive the first cut. It can continue and be potentially dry in 2020, 2021. And the way our system is set up, it was based on the Colorado River flowing. It did not consider pumping water from the far south or recovery. And it is important, especially in the northern area which I represent, that we have an ample water supply, that our citizens are served well, our growth is served well. We are one of the rapid-growing states and cities in the nation. A lot of our economy is based on continued growth. It is, the reason we continue to get new corporations here is because we have always been able to say, "Water is not a problem. We have it for 100 years." And we do. We have the water. We just don't have a distribution system. But we also have an aging system. And when you have pipes that are 100 years old, even 50 years old, it cracks, it leaks, loss of water. It murders the streets. It disrupts neighborhoods. Cars can be seen at the bottom of the pit in the road. We've seen that within the last six months. It is a true safety issue at that point. So, I hope that the members of this council understand how serious this is and that time is important. It's going to take quite a while to get replacements made and to get the infrastructure done. And so, I am hoping then, praying that you all support this effort. It is our future. The governor even recognized it at his speech on Monday, how important this issue is. And we have always been the leader and I want us to continue to be so. So, any comments from Councilwoman Stark?
Thank you. Maybe just to put on the record, if I could, ask the Water Services Director, and I know it's not a lot of money per bill, but for some, it will be. But could you kind of give us the cost of what a bill might look after this is adopted?
Absolutely. Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, so for our average customer, the increased cost in 2019 would be about $1.98, about two bucks, and an additional, we believe, $2.37 in 2020. But I want to add to that, that if you are one of our customers who's very water-conscious, very careful to conserve, and you stay within the allowance that we have on our bill, we expect that the impact would be about a dollar in 2019 and, I believe, it's 75 cents, something on the order of a dollar in 2020. I should also mention that, you know, we revisited our cost of service study and that was one of the things that the Citizens Committee spent a lot of time on, and I'm very grateful for that. And as part of that, we actually found that we were able to reduce our fixed charges because of some efficiencies in our meter reading. And that's good news because that really helps maintain the affordability of our water. And as you know, our water ranks as literally among the most affordable in the country, not just lowest in overall rates.
Thank you. And just as another follow-up, I understand we have water. It really is how we deliver to people. And in some parts of the city, we do not have redundant water supplies, correct? And that's, one of the most important priorities is to make sure we have those redundant water supplies should there be a shortage. Is that correct?
Hate water increases, as you well know. I fought against them way back when. This one, I wouldn't recommend if I didn't think it was necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. DeeDee Barker?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Diane DeeDee Barker. I reside in District Seven. I stand fully in support of this item and the sage advice of every single person that's come in testimony this afternoon. It is fundamental to have good, ready, access, clean water. I have been living for better air, but since I have watched the city of Phoenix through the years with the water, have been very concerned, my thoughts sort of were laid to rest because the mantra from the city was, "We've had it all handled. We've prepared since the eighties. People have started reducing their usage." But what I've seen today, I got to speak with Richard this afternoon and read your documents, and what I see where we're heading, really with the water that's coming to us from the project up north, whether it's Salt River, or the availability of the banking of our water down in Tucson, we need the pumps to bring it. We need the infrastructure. I have gone whenever I could hear about Catherine Sorensen going to out to the public. I went to Councilman Waring's hearing, a neighborhood hearing. When she was there and stayed informed, it is necessary. And what I want to say to the citizens, is you, most of you have been doing a good job buying low float, you know, toilets and different items, but the idea that we have to have a historical district with the grass and all of the water, I see positive movement from the Willow District even in Roosevelt, where people are looking at sustainability. And that's what I'm asking for the public to do more for it. We're in a very high-growth state, and Phoenix is, and we must, must conserve our water and use it wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Hockins?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. Mike Hockins with the Greater Phoenix Chamber, here again to reiterate our support of the water infrastructure proposal before you today. Once again, the Chamber did not take supporting this water rate increase lightly or without careful consideration of the cost benefits. Once again, Phoenix has one of the most affordable water supplies in the country. We want to keep it that way, but we realize, business realize that given the aging pipeline system, investments have to be made. As Cheryl alluded to, without water, they can, there can be no sustained economic development. No matter what the supply side looks like, without the needed delivery systems in place, our businesses and residents are at risk for future needs. With that, Mayor and Council, we respectfully request that you support the proposal before you today. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Lyndon Clark?
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. I, like many citizens in the room, by the way, my name's Leonard Clark, many citizens in the room have seen Phoenix grow tremendously. I remember when they were first building Metro Center, so it's kind of giving you where, hold on. So I do support this, but I ask that, once you pass it, that you do the most, I mean, you really focus in on auditing, making sure that the tax increase is not going to be, you know, wasted. I'm, I'm just highly concerned that we still haven't really addressed the fact that how much more can Phoenix grow? I want us to grow. I mean, I wish we were in that type of world forever, but there's going to come a time, if this Lake Mead situation continues, then, and you can ask the folks down at the legislature who are going to be addressing the whole drought contingency plan. So I really hope that you'll vote for this. I understand my conservative friends and their concerns, but as the committee members who did all this hard work on your commission, one of them said essentially that this is the one thing that 100% of Phoenix citizens need, unless there's somebody from another planet that I don't know about, you know? No. So thank you very much. Hope you'll vote for it.
Thank you. I have one last card, does not want to speak in favor. Arizona Chapter Associated General Contractors in favor. I, I will tell you, I, to me, this is one of the most important issues. I agree with the gentleman and our commission members. Phoenix is at a crossroad. We have always been good stewards of our water. We have been leaders in this valley and in this state. And our system was designed so that the Colorado, Colorado River always flowed. Unfortunately, by the end of this year, we're saying, this year, there is a potential that it will not be flowing very well for us. We are on the bottom of the tier of the people of the states that receive this water. We will receive the first cut. It can continue and be potentially dry in 2020, 2021. And the way our system is set up, it was based on the Colorado River flowing. It did not consider pumping water from the far south or recovery. And it is important, especially in the northern area, which I represent, that we have an ample water supply, that our citizens are served well, our growth is served well. We are one of the rapid-growing states and cities in the nation. A lot of our economy is based on continued growth. It is, the reason we continue to get new corporations here is because we have always been able to say, "Water is not a problem. We have it for 100 years." And we do. We have the water. We just don't have a distribution system. But we also have an aging system. And when you have pipes that are 100 years old, even 50 years old, it cracks, the leaks, loss of water, it murders the streets, it disrupts neighborhoods, cars can be seen at the bottom of the pit in the road. We've seen that within the last six months. It is a true safety issue at that point. So I hope that the members of this council understand how serious this is, and that time is important. It's going to take quite a while to get replacements made and to get the infrastructure done. And so I am hoping then, praying that you all support this effort. It is our future. The governor even recognized it at his speech on Monday, how important this issue is. And we have always been the leader, and I want us to continue to be so. So any comments from Councilwoman Stark?
Thank you. Maybe just to put on the record, if I could ask the Water Services Director, and I know it's not a lot of money per bill, but for some it will be, but could you kind of give us the cost of what a bill might look after this is adopted?
Absolutely. Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, so for our average customer, the cost, the increased cost in 2019 would be about $1.98, about two bucks, and an additional, we believe, $2.37 in 2020. But I want to add to that, that if you are one of our customers who's very water-conscious, very careful to conserve, and you stay within the allowance that we have on our bill, we expect that the impact would be about a dollar in 2019, and I believe it's 75 cents, something on the order of a dollar in 2020. I should also mention that, you know, we revisited our cost of service study, and that was one of the things that the Citizens Committee spent a lot of time on, and I'm very grateful for that. And as part of that, we actually found that we were able to reduce our fixed charges because of some efficiencies in our meter reading. And that's good news, because that really helps maintain the affordability of our water. And as you know, our water ranks as literally among the most affordable in the country, not just lowest in overall rates.
Thank you. And just as another follow-up, I, I understand we have water. It really is how we deliver to people. And in some parts of the city, we do not have redundant water supplies, correct? And that's, it, one of the most important priorities is to make sure we have those redundant water supplies, should there be a shortage. Is that correct?
That is correct. So basically, right now, we find ourselves in a situation where we're dependent on snowpack, right? We need to make sure that, you know, we're dependent on the snowpack up in the Colorado River Rockies, that then flows through the Colorado River and through the central Arizona Project Canal. The mayor mentioned earlier, our system is, is built based on those flows, and we have very limited ability to move water from the central and southern portions of our city up into North Phoenix. We want to rectify that. We want to be ready for what comes on the Colorado River, no matter what that is. And we can do that. And if we invest in this infrastructure, then we can take the alternative supplies that we have developed, groundwater, recharged water, water off the Salt and Verde River Systems, and pump them wherever they need to go, across our distribution system, to make sure that, come what may, on the Colorado River, our folks are going to receive reliable water deliveries.
And just a couple more things. And in other parts of the city, there was a time where we used polybutylene piping. Right or wrong, we used it, and that's caused a lot of problems for certain parts of the city. And so part of this would be to go in and replace that, correct?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, that's correct. We've programmed additional dollars to go in and replace plastic service lines wholesale across different neighborhoods where we know they're problematic. Yes.
Thank you. And then just lastly, Mr. Ray, Mr. Harris, I know, and they are detail men. They really look at the details. So I thank you for supporting this. I know we don't always agree, but on this, we most certainly do. And I have pictures of the gusher if you want to see. But I do really thank you for everything you did on the advisory board and all the other members that are here today as well. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilman Nowakowski?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been on the council since 2007. We've had this conversation many times. One of the things that we agreed to back in 2010 is to bring in a consultant and to create an advisory board or a citizens' board, because most of us up here aren't water experts at all. And I can speak for myself. So I wanted to make sure that we bring in an expert that can actually forecast what would happen in the future. What would happen if we have these, at that time, I was representing the Willow and Candle and Historic Districts, and also half of South Phoenix, Levine and Estrella Mountain and Maryville. And those are the older neighborhoods and the poor neighborhoods. And one of the things that they came up with is a plan. And that plan was to make sure that we would replace all the pipes with, that we needed to. So we sat here, we listened, and 2010 went by, and I agreed with it. 2015 came around, and the same situation. And I, I started to ask questions, and I was kind of hesitant on, on my vote on that. And I voted no. And what I'm concerned about this time around is that back in January 6 of 2016, the council approved two water increases. A 3% increase of water that went into effect March of 2016, and an additional 2% increase in March of 2017, which is a total of 5%. I was told that this increase would produce about 11.6 million of additional revenue in the first full year, and additional 8.2 million in the second full year. Then, we were told also that this increase would potentially bring in about $19.8 million. And one of the things I was told is that it would take care of all those infrastructure problems, especially the ones that I was advocating for within the historic neighborhoods and within the south and west side of our, of our city. Then they said, absolutely. It would be, I asked, for example, what would it cover? They said, "Well, like new pipes to add water leak, um, to stop the water leaks in those neighborhoods," and they replaced all those old pipes. All right. So now, I continue to hear from the residents of my district, where they call and they said, "Councilman, I can't afford to pay the water bill. They're turning off my water. I'm a renter, and I have to pay the water, and I can't pay my rent and the water bill on top of that." People are asking, and I'm here advocating for those individuals, for those poor individuals that are working two to three jobs, just to make sure that they can make rent and take care of their children and feed them. Now, I can't support an increase on these residents of another 12%. If this passes, if this actually passes, within the last five years, we increased water by 17%, and I'm hearing the same stuff over and over again. Now, would this 12% really fix the infrastructure so I don't have to go back out to the community and say, "Hey, don't worry, this is going to fix all those gutters and all those pipe leaks and all those road closures that you have and stuff like that?" When I go out in the community, they're saying, "Michael, they're digging up the same water pipe three times within a year. Don't you guys communicate with each other? Don't you guys try to fix it?" Some of them aren't even city employees. And that was another plan, is that we would outsource some of this, these jobs, that it would be quicker and easier, and that we would fix this problem, which I was against that. And that's why I voted no, because I believe that our workers were more experienced and they understood the infrastructure issues, and I wanted to make sure that we had the best individuals out there fixing our pipes. But I was outvoted then, and I'm probably going to be outvoted again. But I'm voting no as an advocate for those poor families that can't take a 17% increase, a tax increase on water, within the last five years. And that's where I stand. I know that water is important, and I really want to thank the committee, because you went out there to the community, educated people not to go out there watering their grass every day, flooding them. I mean, we're, we're using the same amount of water as we, as we were using 10 years ago. We've, the population has grown more than twice. So we've done a great job in educating people. But I don't think we've done a great job in really projecting the future. And I want to make sure, after we hired an expert, after we have a committee of advisors that are, that are going to advise us in the right direction, it hasn't happened. So I can't, out of good consciousness, vote for the 17% increase over the last five years. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
Any other Councilman, DeCecio?
Sure, Mayor. I don't think I could say it as eloquently as Councilman Nowakowski here. I mean, bottom line is, in 2016, well, let's go back a little further, unless you were there too, at the very beginning. Remember, I said, "Hey, look, this is not a good idea," back in 2010. Just to bring up the history, what happened back then, it was lack of credibility within the city of Phoenix. In 2010, the city of Phoenix literally was rigging it, and they were just basically setting it up to where it was just a lie. It was just not true. And so if you'd noticed, I didn't really say a whole lot since then. 2016, I started seeing some more issues. Again, I voted no on that, but because we were told specifically back in 2016 that this was going to be used for the infrastructure for Central Phoenix, South Phoenix, that's what the public was being told at the time. And now here it is again, and Jessica, yes, I did read your newspaper article today, it was handed to me, and they literally said Central and South Phoenix again. Notice whose districts those encompass and whose votes that they're going to need here, because I'm going to be eager to find out who, how these, this affects this vote today, because there's nothing that's switched. Nothing's changed. Nothing's been added to this debate since the last vote on this. So I'm eager to find out who's going to end up switching their vote, because then I'm going to also want to see, track what's going to be moving forward. I'm eager to see what happens with the vice mayorship as well. So less than two years ago, the city of Phoenix approved a, and this is for others to also keep track of, watch what happens on future votes and see if there was any game-playing and behind-the-scenes here. So it's also a lack of credibility on my end. This is a pure lack of credibility. From the tax on medicine that we saw was done behind closed doors, they worked on it for one full year, people like myself didn't even know about it, right? So the same things that occurred back in 2010, we're starting to see today again. It just seems to be rearing its ugly head. And so when they, the members of the council over here worked behind the scenes, worked behind closed doors to put a $50 million a year tax on medicine, that was wrong. The city of Phoenix sold $700,000 worth of value of property, city of Phoenix property. They sold it to an inside developer for $50,000. $700,000 appraised value, sold it to an inside developer for $50,000. That's a credibility problem. And right now, you know, that's in court, and they're in discovery at this point, just to let you know that the city of Phoenix is being sued over that land sale. We've had one terrible situation after another. Remember what happened just recently with the South Central neighborhoods, those individuals? That they, all they came to us, they begged us. They begged the politicians, they begged the staff. They said, "Please help us, because what you're projecting in our area, what you're planning in our area is going to destroy our business community, going to destroy it, take it apart." Because north on the light rail system, on north-central, they have two lanes in two directions where it's wealthier, nicer area, all that stuff, right? That's what everyone seems to think. South, you know what happened in the South Phoenix area? They got one lane in each direction. Now imagine if there's an emergency or anything else, it'll destroy those businesses over there. It'll prevent people from wanting to go down there. But they were promised by the same people here today, saying that we ought to be trusting our government, we need to do this. The same people today promised them that they were going to do something for them. And you know what ended up happening? Nothing. Nothing. Those people were left in the dust. As a matter of fact, as last week, the city of Phoenix, they filed an initiative, they took the matters into their own hands, they filed an initiative, 40,000 people in the city of Phoenix filed an initiative, saying, "We want to be protected. We want to make sure that we're safe." And you know what the city of Phoenix did? They turned, unethically, turned over a contract employee, a client, I'm sorry, a contract attorney for the city of Phoenix, and gave it to the other side to fight that initiative, fight those 40,000 people. That's an insider game. So if you look at what's been happening here, it's been one boondoggle after another. And Catherine, I really respect you, I like you, I think you've done a really good job. But I'm going to tell you, it's a credibility issue. It's a, it's an issue of trust in your government when you started seeing this. And this is all happening within the last six to eight months. This has all happened recently. All these things have occurred. And now they expect us to trust them. I don't. I don't trust what the city of Phoenix is telling me. I don't think you should either. And this tax increase is the largest tax increase ever in our history, ever, after we were told about a year and a half ago that that was going to be for infrastructure for the same areas that I hear that's happening today. So I think you should look at this with some discernment and make a decision on your own. But from my end, I think this has been unethically put together. I think there's a lot of things that are happening behind closed doors. Watch what happens in the future and find out who flips their vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I, I will tell you, I have been involved in the water issue on the city council for the last two or three years, as assigned to the subcommittee I was serving on. And we have been part of the negotiations throughout the state. We have taken a leadership role. There have been articles in the paper about the Colorado River for a year, I would guess, or close to it, and talking about the shortage was coming, the problems that are happening, our position in this. And also, as we're going along with this, we have recognized that there is a major infrastructure problem, not only for distribution, but with old pipes, with leakage. I love getting those pictures from Councilwoman Stark, where the water is about six foot in the high, and half a car is missing. It's within the concrete, the hole. I, I think that people recognize that we have supplied them with safe water for a long time, that we have responsible rates, that we have been very cautious on how we have proceeded with our water, and we have planned ahead the fact that we have water stored in Tucson. We have wells. We have different places that we have stored within this valley. And we have worked very closely with the other cities, so that we make sure that they have water and we cooperate with one another and we share resources very often. We help them with advice, we help them with infrastructure. And I will tell you, I think you have a superb staff who has always been very responsible. You have come out any time I have had a community meeting and went over detail by detail, answered every single question, to make sure that everyone understood where we are today. I think the fact that the governor and the legislator is working on a plan, our drought contingency plan, says it all. Everyone recognizes, when the Secretary of Department of Interior comes into town and says, "There will be a shortage, it's just a matter of when," to me, that's a pretty good expert, someone who has the control, that has the knowledge, who has the resources to watch the Colorado River and the lakes every day. They know exactly when it's going down. And I wish we had a lot of snow up north, and the Colorado just had a terrible, terrible blizzard. Don't tell them that. But even if that happened this year, it probably wouldn't stop this process. The flow patterns have changed, partly because Colorado has continued to develop very rapidly. And when you look at the other states that take the water too, Utah's grown tremendously, Nevada's grown, even though California has put in measures to reduce their consumption, they still take a lot of water. And then comes Arizona at the end of that list. And we have continued to grow in this valley. And even though we have prepared for it, we were relying on that system. And that system is not going to be available at the level that we had anticipated or for the length of time that everyone expected. And I think if it didn't go dry this year, the potential is still there in the next few years, and we would be greatly remiss if we didn't have a system in place, that we had a water supply that went north. This state has been very dependent on Phoenix's leadership, whether it's water, it's economic development, whatever. We are the, as, let me put it this way, as Phoenix goes, so does the state. And they may not like to hear that down there, but it's true. I mean, we are the capital city, and when the headline hits and it says, "Phoenix in trouble," that means Arizona's in trouble, and that would reverberate around the world. People who have said that they're very interested in moving here, well, stop and think about that. And I think we have the means to change that. We have the water, we have the plan, we just need to put the infrastructure in place and replace the pipe so we don't lose more water and do more damage. And I commend you, have worked very closely with street transportation. We approved several hundred million dollars to come in and redo the streets. I know they have coordinated very closely, because this council has repeatedly said, "Don't you dare put in a new street and have water rip it out," that you are timing things with them. So I think this has been a very citywide effort, and I just want you to know, I appreciate it, and think this is extremely important for this, not only for this community, but for this entire state. Anyone else?
Mayor, just, could I clarify in our motion? It should be the first bill date of March 2019, correct? I don't think I clarified that when I made the motion, so, thank you.
There are no one else? Roll call.
I have, I will, I'll do it when I vote.
DeCecio?
Nope.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Can I explain my motion, please? I have always supported this item. I consistently hear from our residents that they are concerned about the fact that we have pipes dating back from 1940, and our infrastructure is crumbling, especially in District Eight, a district that has been neglected for years and years. We can be concerned with personal agendas, that's not leadership. We need to think about what's best for Phoenix and our residents for the next 50 years and beyond. I would like to make an amendment to the motion if, if it's accepted. I would like to also include to direct staff to set up a website. It would be a water and infrastructure map, similar to the LED lights that we have in the street preservation, pavement preservation map, I believe. This website would include all the repairs, so residents can go into this website, see all the repairs that are happening in their district. And it would also include how much we're spending on these, on the project. So if the maker of the motion is okay with that. So if the maker of the motion is okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay? I will be supporting this item. Thank you.
I support the, the motion. That was the second.
Mayor, members of the council, since some of the voting had already occurred before that was added to the motion, we could either treat it as a directive to staff to do or we need to go back and re-vote on the amended motion.
We'll make it a directive.
Okay, it's a directive. Continue, please.
Noakowski? Pastor?
So, and I don't know if I can get through this?
No.
Who you see sitting today is a woman in mourning for her father and for his leadership. One of the conversations I had was that leadership is difficult. And when you make votes and you take your votes, they are difficult because it impacts many and it impacts some. And this vote is a very difficult vote. Because in 2016, when I voted, or 2015, 2016, I can't get the dates, my memory is right now foggy. I had asked at that time, this is for infrastructure. It was for infrastructure in District Four because of all the leaks. It was for infrastructure in District Seven and District Eight, where the majority of the infrastructure is aging. And so I voted. I also during that time had said, I don't want to go, come again and vote again for another rate increase. I'd rather have the rate increase at this moment, set it where it needs to be set so we can carry it all the way through. And with a deep understanding of our infrastructure and a deep understanding of how our capacity of water has changed and how we have done a great job in preserving our water and being able to move water throughout our city and how important it is because without water, we won't survive. The other piece is, is that this is not just a city issue. It's a state issue. We also impact other cities. Because I read a letter from my constituent today saying how it impacts Cave Creek because the pipes don't discriminate cities. The pipes just move water. And so as I take this vote, I think of my father because he was the man of infrastructure. He was the man about jobs. He was the man about what is best for the city and the people of Arizona. And to me, that's true leadership. There's eight of us that sit here and we're being asked to lead. And leadership isn't just community events and cutting ribbons and being able to do those fun things that we all enjoy and like. It's really giving what is needed for the city. And leadership is doing the right thing. And as I was standing in the back pacing back and forth because I had to shake what I feel of the presence of my father in front of me and I had to really get my thoughts together. Let me just tell you, I don't call myself a politician. People call me a politician. I have to accept that and embrace that. I'm Laura Pastor, a councilwoman that was elected by the residents to represent them. I'm Laura Pastor, who is as authentic as she can be, who has integrity and was taught integrity, who is, been placed here to lead. I am Laura Pastor, who doesn't do background deals, who's not shady, who wasn't raised that way, who doesn't have people hired because that's their people. That's not me. So those that want to come after me, as I get those calls, can come after me. You can recall me. You can do all the things that you want to do. That's fine. Because at the end of the day, District Four will rise to the occasion and will vote for me because they know me. And they know I'll do the right thing. Last week, or whenever it was, when I was in my deep, deep, very deep fog, I had to come and vote. I voted no. And I voted no because at that time, I was like, we, I already did an increase. What does this mean? That time, I really didn't, wasn't in the space to really be prepped and understand. I asked for clarity this week. I've got clarity. I understand. And so I will be the one that will step up to the plate and hit the home run as my kids, as I live in a baseball world too, and make sure I lead. And make sure that I lead a city to be able to have water, be able to have the infrastructure that is needed in order to move the water up north. So I'm ready for you. Come get me. I'm a yes vote.
Stark? Waring? Williams?
Absolutely, yes. And I thank the women to have the courage and the leadership to step up and do the right thing. Five, three. Our next item?
Item fifty-one?
Fifty-one.
Did you have a second? I moved it.
Yeah.
I moved fifty-one. Did we have a second?
I, we moved fifty-one. Do we have a second? Lieutenant Clark?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I hope you'll support this, our democracy, our constitutional democratic republic. Again, for my fellow conservatives, it's going to be based upon the free and equal elections that we have, especially here in Phoenix. And I hope that this board, these election boards will do a good job. I believe in our city's staff and their professionalism. And I might have a few PAC fines. I've got to come see the city clerk about later. But I really hope that you will vote yes for this elections board. I thank you for letting me speak. And I think, you know, even whether I agree with you or disagree with you, I know, I really believe that you all are very conscientious and you take a lot of attacks. And quite frankly, I would be so bored if I had to sit up there and I probably couldn't hold back my tongue. So I hope you'll vote for this. Thank you.
Any comments? Hearing none? Roll call.
DeCecio? Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza? Noakowski? Pastor? Stark? Waring? Williams?
Yes, I just learned that we, item fifty was missed on our sheet. And it's a public hearing. So we will go back to item fifty. I will open the public hearing. Do we have any cards on that item? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on item fifty? Hearing or hearing none? I close the public hearing. Now we will go back to one fifteen. And we do have a card? Marie Harmon? Oh, one fifteen is the zoning case?
Yes.
All right, we better have a staff presentation quick first.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. Well, the PowerPoint comes up here real quick. Item one fifteen is a rezoning request at Southwest Corner, Nineteenth Street and Roosevelt. It is a request to go from R four and R five to walkable urban code for a 4.96 acre site for a multifamily residential development. Staff is recommending approval, subject to stipulations. You can see the subject site here outlined in red. The existing zoning is R five and R four. So the proposed request is not granting any additional density to the parcel. It is granting the walkable urban code zoning district, which is what the city wants to see based upon the adopted Eastlake-Garfield TOD plan for this area. It's also within our Choice Neighborhoods grant area. You see the larger orange boundary here is the Choice Neighborhoods grant area. The red is the subject site. It is a project that is keeping in concert with what we want to do with Choice Neighborhoods in promoting a mixed income community as part of this entire redevelopment with the Choice Neighborhoods grant. You can see the subject site and what it looks like right here as part of the proposal. It is a request that was approved by the Central City Village Planning Committee by a twelve to zero vote, as well as the Planning Commission by a seven to zero vote. Staff does recommend approval per the Planning Commission recommendation. With that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions at this side? Hearing none? I will take the public comment, which is the only card I have is Marie Harmon.
I oppose this rezoning as it currently is because not only has the process lacked transparency and accountability, but it will also make the housing in my neighborhood less affordable and risk displacing us. I live about ten blocks east of the proposed rezoning site. And after reading the three hundred page One Vision Plan associated with the Eastlake-Eddison neighborhood, I was unable to locate a written legal guarantee that holds this project accountable with hard numbers that protects my community from displacement. The displacement that I fear comes from property taxes and rent rising as all of the proposed improvements are implemented. My neighborhood's average household income is sixteen thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars per year. And sixty-eight percent of my neighborhood's families are living in poverty. Building mixed income housing instead of more low income housing shifts the priority from protecting low income folks from homelessness and getting more folks off the street to adding value to the neighborhood. I believe increasing the amount of low income housing in Phoenix is a direct solution for homelessness. This rezoning process was not accessible to the demographic it claims to serve. The One Vision Plan's research found that the household language for sixty-four point six percent of families is Spanish, with thirty-seven point two percent listing limited English speaking. The large sign stating information about the rezoning along with the One Vision Plan are only available in English. These are my neighbors. They deserve the right to review the same information I have had access to, found concerning, and am left with more questions than answers. How high is the cap on the highest income resident in the mixed income housing? How long will these caps be in place? How will my community be protected from displacement due to these mixed income housing projects raising their rent and property taxes? How hard will my Spanish-speaking neighbors have to work to stay updated and informed in this process? And how transparent and accountable will this process be if it's been like this so far? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other cards? Do we have a motion?
I have some questions.
Okay, please ask your questions.
Cindy's coming up. Thank you, Cindy. The lady spoke about affordability. Can the affordable housing units be sold in the future to allow market rate apartments to displace the residents?
So mayors and members of the council, the city, as part of the Choice Neighborhoods grants and program in this neighborhood, which this vacant lot is phase one of Choice Neighborhoods redevelopment, we are redeveloping five hundred and seventy-seven units of obsolete public housing into eleven hundred units of affordable mixed income housing. So we're actually increasing the number of affordable units in this neighborhood. Five hundred and seventy-seven of those units are existing public housing. We will have five hundred and seventy-seven units of Section Eight project-based vouchers. So every member of public housing at this point can come back and live in one of those Section Eight project-based voucher units. They have first priority. They don't have to re-qualify. It is housing for them. In addition to that, another three hundred and nineteen new units will be low income units, serving those of incomes between sixty percent and eighty percent, or actually forty percent and eighty percent of area median income. And then the rest of the units, two hundred and twenty-six, or twenty percent of the units will be market rate.
Two hundred and twenty-six out of a thousand?
Eleven hundred total.
Okay. And only two hundred and twenty-six will be market rate?
Yes.
Okay. Can you speak a little bit about the Choice Neighborhood project? So you can, so my colleagues here have a little more understanding of what's going on in that area and the grant that we received also from the federal government?
Yes, so mayor and members of the council, the Choice Neighborhoods project is a, it's a grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of thirty million dollars. And the grant's purpose is to redevelop obsolete public housing, number one, because it's a HUD grant. But also, it is, it is geared toward and required of us to, to bring up the entire neighborhood at the same time as redeveloping public housing. So several of you have been around and seen the Matthew Henson redevelopment, Hope Six Matthew Henson redevelopment we did down at Seventh Avenue in Buckeye. Hope Six only concentrated on the housing and simply redeveloped the housing. Choice Neighborhoods is a second iteration of Hope Six. We learned from Hope Six that you have to concentrate on the entire neighborhood. So this is a community-wide grant. We have to put in infrastructure, walkability. We're expanding parks. We're adding amenities to this neighborhood through this grant that it's going to make it a desirable neighborhood and a good neighborhood for everyone to live in. It's going to bring up the entire neighborhood. We have to have economic components, economic development components, infrastructure improvements, shade, more transportation. You know, the residents in here currently only have about a thirty percent vehicle ownership. So all of those things are taken into consideration. We have a lot of demographics about the residents of this neighborhood and we're making improvements that, that will improve all of their lives. The last portion is the people portion of this grant. We're also required to add supportive services to address income and try to increase the income level by, by providing them educational opportunities, by providing job, job training, job programs like that. We also have to provide services that are required. English, English is a second language. Any educational opportunities that are identified by them and as well as nutrition and health and fitness programs that are identified by the neighborhood. So it's a comprehensive program. This thirty million dollar grant is matched by a hundred and ninety-three million dollars in leverage that we obtain from all of our partners, including city partners, nonprofit partners, and others in the city.
Another question. How will this rezoning help the economic development efforts in the area? And can you talk about how the federal government is cutting our funding as well and how that twenty percent of market rate will help with the project?
So mayors and members of the council, the requirement to redevelop into mixed income housing is necessary, and it's required by HUD. When we, when we redevelop public housing, they require us to, to develop into mixed income. And we develop into mixed income using low income housing tax credits. With that, we have designated income levels and tiers of income that you, that you put back into the housing. The reason they require mixed income housing is to vary the income in the neighborhood, deconcentrating poverty and adding disposable income to these communities so that it attracts more economic development around it.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. We have no more public that wants to speak, correct? Then we will close the public hearing on it. And councilmembers, if you have any comments, questions? Councilman Noakowski?
The young lady pointed out that there was a lack of information on the meetings. How many community meetings were out there? And was it provided the information in Spanish?
So mayor and members of the council, leading up to Choice Neighborhoods, we had two years of a planning process and over, I believe, seventy-five meetings, two thousand participants in those meetings. And this was, the, the concept and the, the fact that this was phase one was in all of those meetings. At every one of those meetings, we had Spanish interpreters because most of our public housing residents are Spanish-speaking. And as she was correct, that thirty percent of them speak Spanish only in the home. So, excuse me. Leading up to this and part of the Choice Neighborhoods, we had a significant amount of communication. Now for the zoning process, I'll let Alan answer that.
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, the zoning process does require two letters, as well as a sign posting on the site and advertising in the newspaper. And all of those requirements were met. There were meetings. There were meetings that were held where there was folks available to speak Spanish if they needed to, but they've met all the requirements associated with that. In addition to that, there were prior meetings as part of the Reinvent Phoenix process where we did have Spanish speakers there to talk about the community desires related to the planning process as well.
Thank you.
Cindy, if I recall, HUD came and presented the check over at the center, and you had overwhelming response from people who are in the neighborhood, who live in that housing, and their excitement, I mean, you could feel it in the air. They were so appreciative. So I thank you for doing a great job in holding and including all of them, because they were telling, very importantly, the role they were playing, and they were so very proud of it. So thank you. Councilwoman?
Cindy, you have a question. When you say mixed income, is there a maximum income, or is it just mixed?
So mayor and members of the council, the incomes are stipulated in your funding. So when you are awarded low-income housing tax credits, you have to designate tiers of, say you have 177 units, which is what we're building on this property, we have to have a certain number of them designated as low-income, in this case, Section 8 project-based vouchers for our public housing residents to come back in, a certain number of units at 60% area median income, 80% area median income, and then a certain number of units that are not income-restricted that are market rate. So that is designated in your funding, and that lasts for up to 40 years.
So, that's a key for me. So this is a 40-year project, and what happens after year 41?
So the 40 years is actually a stipulation of the federal government on your low-income housing tax credits and any home, other kinds of federal funds that you put in. That's required by the federal government. However, these projects will be owned by the city of Phoenix. So we will create limited liability companies for each project, and the city of Phoenix will own 51% or be a 51% owner, so we will effectively own it forever.
And we will continue to have affordability within the city of Phoenix after 41 years?
Yes.
Okay. So, basically, we're modernizing the area, or we're building an area where there will be affordability, workhouse housing, and also some mix in income where they'll be at market rate in order to diversify the income coming within the area. Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? We need a motion.
Motion to approve the rezoning application in the southwest corner of 19th Street and Roosevelt Street.
Per the Planning Commission's recommendation and adopted related ordinance?
Back it.
Any further comment? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Williams?
Yes. 8-0. Brings us to item 116. I believe we'll start with the staff report.
Yes, mayor, members of council. Item number 116 is a rezoning request approximately 125 feet north of the northwest corner of 52nd Street and Virginia Avenue. It is a request from R16 to PUD for a 1.98-acre site for a planned unit development zoning district to allow multifamily residential. Staff does recommend approval per the staff memo from January 7, 2019. The map before you in red shows the subject site. You can see this is 52nd Street going north-south right here in this area. The church is to the south, single-family residential to the east, and then, single-family residential, and then a multifamily in the north and wrapping around, and then more single-family residential, I'm sorry, on the east side over here as well. You can see this is the zoning map, shows the zoning pattern of R3 multifamily going down to this area, which also reflects what the general plan designation is, which is residential 10 to 15-plus for these parcels going down along 52nd Street here. Here's the proposed site plan that removes one unit per the Planning Commission recommendation up in the far northeast corner of the project, also relocated the trash bins further along the south property line over here. You can see that this diagram shows the 150-foot per the new stipulation that came out on the memo the other day of the 7th. It talks about moving the trash containers further away to address community concerns about the trash being too close to residents on this side over here. This is the elevations. It is 32 feet in height, which is 2 feet more than the base district allows, but they do have a three-story element that they are fitting within that three stories. So you can see a ground-floor garage level and then two stories of living space above that. Staff does recommend approval of this. It was approved by the Camelback East Village Planning Committee and as well as the Planning Commission, and with that, staff is happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, we will open the public hearing. Paul Gilbert, you're the applicant, representing the applicant. Could you give a presentation?
My name is Paul Gilbert, 701 North 44th Street in Phoenix. I'm here representing the owners of the property, and as the staff has pointed out, this is a rezoning application from R16 to PUD. The requested PUD will allow for a compatible, high-quality infill, medium-density residential development of just under 2 acres. I ask you to focus on the staff report. I've never had a more positive staff report in the many years that I've been doing this. The staff report makes a very important conclusion. It says, and I quote, "The proposal includes certain development standards and design guidelines that exceed conventional zoning ordinance standards and are compatible with the character of the surrounding area." I emphasize that, that we are compatible with the character of the surrounding area. This proposal also will ensure consistency with the character of the surrounding land use patterns. Based on those findings, we are in the posture, as noted by Alan, of a solid approval from the planning staff. Again, every reviewing agency that is charged with the obligation to give you advice on this case has recommended approval: staff, village, and unanimous planning commission. The general plan use designation, as indicated on the screen, basically shows that the entire west side of 52nd Street, from Oak to Thomas, including the subject property, is for a density of 10 to 15 units per acre, which is what we're at. The R3 zoning district, which is the 10 to 15 units per acre district, is the pattern that we focused the PUD on. So the PUD, although a PUD, it's an R3-density project. The rezoning from R3, in this case, PUD, is in keeping and consistent with the general plan. With the PUD, the only thing we are doing outside the R3 is we've asked for two more feet. As the staff report tringently points out to you, this is more than made up for the fact by the overly generous setbacks we are providing in this case. Staff also indicates that, in addition, listen to all these plans that we conform to. We conform with the Tree and Shade Master Plan, the Complete Streets Guiding Principles Plan, the Reimage Phoenix Narrative. They have also found that the PUD request conforms to the zoning ordinance standards for parking, signage, shading, and sustainability. I don't know of a plan or guideline that the city has that this project does not comply with. The PUD allows us to have enhanced development standards so that we're providing even more protection to the surrounding neighborhood. Let me give you, I think, a tangible illustration of that. Building setbacks, and again, this is what the staff focuses on in their recommendation to you. Two quick examples of setbacks. R3 on the south would suggest a setback of, a building setback of 15 feet. We are providing 50, 5-0. The R3 zone for the west side, where the majority of the residents live, suggests a building setback in R3 of 15. We are providing 25. Virtually, all of our setbacks exceed that amount. Additionally, on lot coverage, is proposed at a maximum of 30%, whereas R3 is only 45%. Again, we are more restrictive than the R3 zoning category. The landscape setbacks are consistent with or increased over the R3 district. The PUD also includes 12 specific standards related to the architecture above and beyond the city's standard design guidelines. In summary, this PUD request has been deemed consistent with the general plan by the staff and is found in compliance with all other regulatory documents and guidelines. Like to talk a little bit about neighborhood outreach.
I need to have you wrap up here pretty quickly.
All right, I'm going to wrap it up very quickly. Neighborhood outreach is an important consideration in this case. As you know, we are here in the posture of a three-quarter majority vote. I point out to you, if you look though at the map where the three-quarter vote was designated, there are more property owners adjacent to our site that did not sign the petition than signed the petition. Furthermore, we've been at this process for two years. Early on in the process, we had a petition signed by quite a few neighbors, and all of the neighbors that were at our last neighborhood meeting at this point, and that changed later, indicated that they would support it by the signed petition. In fact, our signed petition of two people that signed in support earlier have now changed and signed the petition in opposition. So, we basically have tried to reach out to the neighborhood. Lastly, we hear all the time, "Gilbert, can't you compromise this case? Isn't there something you can do?" This case is a paragon of compromise. We have compromised on the density. We've compromised on the setbacks. We've compromised on the landscaping, and we've also compromised on the location of the refuge collection. So, we stand in the posture of every single agency recommending approval. I would be pleased to answer any questions. Sorry, I went a bit over time there, mayor.
Don't see any questions at this point. We'll go to the cards. Thank you. I have the cards. William Navarro?
My name is William Navarro. I've lived in Phoenix 60 years, 47 years in this property that they're talking about. We have 48 neighbors that signed against this project. We have lived in that area, very comfortable, a good quality of life. This property was a county island at one time, and the only way we can get into that property is 52nd Street and Virginia or 51st Street and Thomas. And that impacts the area very much, because we have three schools in the area, and they're bringing people into the area in cars. So I agree with Mr. Gilbert, this project is a good project, but it belongs somewhere else, not in our neighborhood. Our quality of life is impacted very much. And councilman, you're aware of the area. You've had that problem before. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patricia Kennedy Stefanic?
Mayor Williams and councilman, and you did a great job pronouncing my last name. Most people slaughter it. We are talking about an infill lot here, and I think everybody agrees that infill lots need to be developed. Our neighborhood, however, does not agree with how it has been proposed to be developed. Three stories, 32 feet high, and a density of 29 to 32 units. It seems to be changing. This development is out of character for this existing neighborhood, which has been here since the 50s. It's a three-story development is going to cut this neighborhood visually in half. It is not similar or consistent with an existing single-family home neighborhoods. It's going to stick out like a sore thumb, and it is going to change the nature and culture of this area. This neighborhood really runs east to west, not north to south like we keep hearing. It is an east-to-west neighborhood with single-family homes on all sides except for one two-story home to the north. It's a small neighborhood, but it's been there for a very long time. I keep hearing about the general plan, that it is consistent with the general plan. We believe, the neighbors that is, is that this little area, this little pocket neighborhood should be an exception to that, to that general plan. However, if you really want multifamily housing in this area, we do have a compromise for that. Now, we have asked over and over of these developers to make a compromise, to lower the, to change from three stories to one or two stories and to limit the density. They have said no, consistently no, because they can't afford it. Here's our great compromise. Build one-story condos or patio homes just right up the street, just north of this property, south of Thomas, on the west side of 52nd Street. We already have a one-story condo development. It fits in the neighborhood. So, when I hear that this is consistent with the neighborhood, it is not consistent with the neighborhood. So that's what our neighbors would like to see. We don't mind if there's condos, but we do mind three stories, and we do mind that number of people.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Christina Sampson is next, and three people have donated time, so you can have a total of six minutes.
Hello, my name is Christina Sampson. I live at 5116 East Virginia Avenue. That is the property directly south of the proposed development, and I would like to use my time to directly address Mr. Gilbert's comments. First of all, I have to respectfully disagree with his rhapsodic praise of the staff report. We actually have found a number of issues with it. Let's talk about the things the staff report does not address. For example, draining, grading, and flood issues. In addition, it does not actually address a noncompliance issue with the fire code. The turning radius towards the back of the proposed development is not actually in compliance with city fire code. Also, as far as his compromises for, that he's made, let's be honest here, if you look at the map here, those setbacks aren't compromises, they're compliance. The setback from 52nd Street was at the request of the city. The setback on the, the setback on the south has to do with the fact that they require parking for this development. They're hardly making a great acquiescence to us. They needed parking for this development, and that's where they had to put it based on their plans. Compliance is not compromise. There is also an easement on the east side, so that's going to add to their setback regardless. So, thank you for washing the milk bottles, but I'm afraid, no, that's not actually a compromise. Furthermore, as far as the people who have signed the petition, that is the reason we're here, I'd like to point out that in actuality, 100% of the homeowners within the 150-foot area required have signed this petition requesting a three-quarter vote hearing. petition requesting a three-quarter vote hearing. The only residents who did not sign this petition were one home that is an Airbnb in which the owner could not be contacted, but who I spoke to a year ago and is opposed to it, and also two homes that are renters. The third home that did not sign it was only because the homeowners could not get in touch with the property manager in time, and that person was also opposed. So, if you go by the actual required amount of people and land area to get a three-quarter hearing, let's be clear, it is a hundred percent of the residents who will be most directly impacted by this property. So that is a mischaracterization. Finally, in terms of this "compatible with the character of the surrounding area" quote, I'm sorry, um, I seem to see a surrounding area of three sides of single-family residents. I, I'm not seeing a surrounding area of three-story multifamily housing units. So I am respectful, with all respect to the city and all the report work that goes into a staff report, and I understand that, I am quite frankly, nonplussed as to how this is compatible with the surrounding area. I walk and ride my bike and live in that surrounding area, and I don't seem to be passing multi-story thirty-one unit, living units. I simply aren't. Um, also, going back to what my neighbor has said, uh, we are not opposed. This is not a NIMBY protest. We are not opposed to development. We understand that the city has a general plan. We understand your targeting area south of Thomas for infill. We understand that multifamily housing addresses water conservation issues. This entire neighborhood is for all of those things. As my neighbor has said, we are not here opposing multifamily unit housing. We are here opposing the fact that there's a request for a PUD zone. There are plenty of multifamily housing units, as they themselves have pointed out, all up and down Fifty-Second Street that did not require a change in zoning. Those are profitable, they're affordable, and they are more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Now, this neighborhood is gonna change. Developers are gonna come. Gentrification is perhaps inevitable. However, it does not have to be completely discordant with the surrounding neighborhood. I live in one of the most desirable real estate zip codes in the city right now. Why is that? Because it is a stable and established neighborhood. A high-density complex like this is perennially subject to the vacillations of the housing market. Should the market turn, it's going to become a renter place. That's gonna lead to a more transient population. That's gonna have a detrimental impact on both the ability to economically develop this area and the school district as well. There is no need for a PUD approval for this. You can meet the requirements of your general plan, you can meet the needs of the neighborhood, and you can also meet any of the other objectives this city is attempting to achieve with infill without approving this particular zoning application. There are options. This is not the only option. And in terms of the two years that they have spent developing this, for two years, there are plenty of people who have said they don't want three stories. And quite frankly, it is not our neighborhood's responsibility to ensure the bottom line of this developer. That's all, I'm good.
Thank you. Oh, wait, we have a question. Councilwoman?
So, your, your neighborhood said that you would be willing to go along with a one-story multifamily, but would, would you be willing to go along with increasing the density as a trade-off from the height to addition?
So, because the general plan is voter-approved, and we understand that, and because the general plan does allow for the fifteen units per parcel, I mean, you know, as residents of a city that approved that by vote, I guess we're kind of forced to acquiesce to that. Obviously, we would prefer to keep it R one six and keep it at six. Um, again, we understand the infill goals of the city. We understand the reasons for that. Um, less than fifteen is obviously more than desirable. More than fifteen is untenable. I will be here again.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we have some more cards that do not wish to speak. Carbin Navarro is opposed. Guy Merkley, opposed. Ray, I'm gonna do it again, Stenaphonic? Opposed. Mary Thorman, opposed. Is there anyone else that wished to speak? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, council members, do you have questions, comments, or a motion?
Mayor, without being presumptuous, do I get a chance at rebuttal? I'll, I'll take the presumptuous category.
Okay, two minutes.
Okay, all right. So much to cover. Let, let me just quickly go through it. First of all, we can put two stories on, on there now with the R one six. We can go thirty feet with the R one six. We're at thirty-two feet. So we can go the very, uh, within two feet of the height under the existing zoning. Next, if they did one-story condos, remember, we can go under R three, which is everything else up and down the street. We can go three stories, but one-story condo, you can't get anywhere near the density that the general plan allows. That's just not anything that would work. Um, the comment on the setback, we weren't required to do those setbacks. Sure, we put the parking with the fifty-foot setback, in fact, next to Christine's house, but we could've put the parking in the middle and then had the building immediately adjacent to her, not immediately, but within fifteen feet of her house. So we didn't do that. Um, then, all these issues about fire code and drainage, and we don't meet the requirements, those are site plan issues. We've gotta go through that. We'll meet those when we come in. That's a non sequitur and doesn't apply. Also, they do not have one hundred percent of the property surrounding this parcel signed. The three-quarter vote doesn't show that, but we know of other parcels that are adjacent to the site that are not in opposition. So, we, and I know I've gone on more than you said, but we've worked for two years for this, and we have made a lot of compromises. And this is a good project. Everybody that is charged with telling you and commenting on it says it's a good project and should be approved, and it's consistent with the general plan. Incidentally, I didn't comment earlier, we also agree with all of the staff stipulations, including the revised stipulation from your staff that you just recently received.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stark?
Actually, I think you answered some of the questions. I was gonna check. I- in a single-family residential, it can be thirty feet, so even the one-story's there today, if they wanted to remodel, they could go to thirty feet, correct?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Stark, that is correct.
And of course, they would have to go through the site plan process that could hopefully capture the issues of the, uh, grading, drainage, and flood issues?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, yes, that's all addressed as part of the site planning. The, the only matter before the council today is, is zoning. Those issues get addressed and have to be met per the code requirements after, um, a, a case if it was approved by council.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman DeCecio?
No, I'll just go ahead and make a motion too, if you don't mind, Mayor. Uh, one, to the neighbors that are there. Um, I don't, you know, the, the PUD itself is very strict, so whatever's written in there, it's virtually impossible to change. Just so you know why even I, members of, up here like the PUD, is because it's written and it's virtually impossible to change once it's written in there. When you go through a zoning category change, that leaves a lot of things that could be opened up later in the future. We've gone through this process, and I can talk about how the village approved it, the Planning Commission approved it, and that it's only two feet higher than what's normal in the, in the R three. And it essentially, with all components in there, it complies with the R three zoning, and it complies with the general plan. It just does. Um, I've struggled with this one too, but it's the same thing that we, it's the same issue that we faced, uh, if you look at North Central several months ago, uh, the same thing happened there. There is, you know, we like to live in our homes. I like to live in my home, but there are a lot of individuals that are moving toward higher density because that's where they wanna live. They don't wanna take care of a yard, but they still wanna live in a beautiful community that you have, that we have in our community there. I mean, it's fantastic. It's one of the, I think it's one of the most prettiest areas. You're right next to Papico Park. It's stunning what's there. But there are a lot of young people in particular, and, you know, if you're talking about gentrification, it is occurring throughout our city, and individuals want to live in an area that their parents live in. They want to live in an area because they may not be able to afford the housing in there, even though these are gonna be kind of pricey, these, uh, these, uh, these multifamily housing, from what I've heard. And so, what ends up happening is, this is a struggle that's going out throughout the city. It's not just your community and the ones that I represent out there. It's happening throughout our entire city. Uh, because there is a movement, there's a change right now that's occurring with housing. It just is. And we're either upgrading an area, and we can always debate whether you agree with that or not, but, you know, a lot of us do believe that it is an upgrade because it's bringing in new, new housing, new individuals into an area. Um, the, some of the arguments that I heard too, dealing with the traffic and the congestion and all that, we've heard that before as well. And it's just what's happening across, not just Phoenix, but it's happening throughout the entire country right now. And if you're not upgrading and looking for new types of housing to go into an area, you may end up owning a property that's gonna go downhill over time. I had the same conversation with those individuals in Arcadia. This is a while back on a project. So, I'm gonna be supporting this. I'm gonna be, uh, making the motion to approve it, and I do understand what's going on. It's not just you. It's happening across the city. It's happening across the country too. It's happening anywhere that you have a large city. Um, my motion's to approve it, Mayor.
Per the Planning Commission, adopt the related ordinance?
Correct.
Mayor, members of council, this particular one would be approved per the Planning Development Department, uh, Director Memo dated January seventh, twenty nineteen, adopt the related ordinance. There were a couple of modified, modified stipulations.
That's the technical language that I left out, but yes.
Okay, do I have a second? We have a second. Uh, any further comments? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Williams?
Yes. Okay. Do we have any public comment cards? We have none? None? We're adjourned.